You're live.
Live. I call the Monday, January twenty second, twenty twenty four, Westlake Regular Board Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
Lozinski.
Here.
Pernot.
Here.
Fanukin.
Here.
Kraft.
Here.
Lamb. Lamb here.
Okay. Now we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Start us off. Of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'll start off by reading our mission and vision statements. Our mission statement is we educate for excellence. Empowering all students to achieve their educational goals. To direct their lives and to contribute to society. Our vision statement is the Westlake City School District will provide a dynamic. Student-centered learning environment. Our district will be characterized by high achievement. Actively engaged learners. Mutual respect. Shared knowledge. Pursuit of new skills and capabilities. Collaborative learning. Willingness to take action. A team commitment to data-driven continuous improvement through our strategic planning process and tangible results. And I'd like to welcome all of you. Uh, here tonight for tonight's meeting, and I know we have a lot of uh. Uh, recognition that'll come forth, so thank you for being here. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved second.
Need discussion? Roll call, please.
Correct.
Yes.
Fanukin.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Lozinski.
Yes.
Pernot.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, this is the time for our recognitions and informative reports, so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Goggins, our Excellence Awards.
Thank you very much. Uh, we do this twice a year and it's uh, something that's always fun to do because the nominations come from colleagues. Uh, they come from people who work with um, the people who are recognized today. They work every day. Um, so this isn't something that's administrative driven or something that comes from people out in the community. It comes from your colleagues. They are watching you and they're seeing what you contribute to not only the students in the school, but also uh, to other staff members as well. So it's always fun to kind of go through the nominations and look at it. And I said this last time, and I have a feeling based on the people who've been nominated already is we keep saying we can't believe this person hasn't been nominated already. And um, and we actually, and we roll people over too, and it is, it is the group of people that we have nominated are incredible. The people who are actually being recognized this evening are incredible. And what's even more fun about this is what happens most of the time and is definitely happening this evening is the two people being recognized are incredibly humble and are probably horrified having to stand up and being recognized as an individual. Um, which also goes to their character. They don't do what they do every day for recognition. Um, they do it because it's what they love to do. Um, so what I'm going to do is I'll announce who the two are. And then uh, we'll have the principal from each of the buildings that they work in, come to the podium with them and uh, be able to say things about them. We always have the person go up because we get to watch them squirm while people say nice things about them. So it is, maybe we're a little evil in that way, but we enjoy that. Um, so for the two thousand, well, it's coming into two thousand twenty-four. Excellence in Classified Service. We have Julie Sepsi, who is a supervision assistant at Westlake Elementary School, and she makes great cookies too. Um, so you know, and the, the recipient for the fall Excellence in Teaching Award is Kate O'Leary. And she is an Intervention Specialist at Westlake High School. So I would like to if, start off by inviting Mr. Plantner up to the podium along with Julie. Come on up.
Good evening, everybody. It really is my pleasure to introduce Julie Sepsi to anyone who doesn't already know her. She is a delightful individual that really is wonderful to work with every day. Uh, Julie is not only professional and wonderful with our students, um, but she is dedicated. She always has a positive attitude. Um, and she shows up to work every day, which is a, a wonderful thing to know that we can count on her and that we know that she is always there to support our students and to support her colleagues. So I'm gonna read a little bit the, today about some of the comments that her colleagues made about her uh, to share really just how much she's appreciated. So Julie is a natural leader. She's a wonderful teammate and a great support to her coworkers. Her colleague says that I've been very blessed in my short time at Wes to get to know her and to call her my friend. I can't think of anyone more deserving than her to receive this recognition. Another colleague says that Julie is amazing. She's always ready to help any child and she's great at communicating with the classroom teachers. We are so lucky to have her at Wes. Another says that Julie always goes above and beyond and is always willing to lend a helping hand. She's always looking for ways to better herself and her job performance. She is amazing. Another colleague says that Julie's been an integral part of our staff. Her strengths are creating and maintaining relationships with students. Communicating to teachers regarding students and reflecting as well as problem solving, to name a few. Says, I got to know Julie and her approach to her position firsthand, often seeing her during recess and also when she'd give almost a daily report on how our class and sometimes specific students were doing on the playground. She takes the time to get to know the students. She knows them all by name, not those, not just those who need more help, and she shows interest in what they're doing. She is firm and fair, which is why many students go to her for help, even though she's not necessarily assigned to their class. Another says that Julie shows respect to every child, treating them as if they were her own. She's the first one to help out where she is needed. She's flexible, easily rearranges her schedule to help provide support to students, and she is who we choose to train new employees. One of the greatest qualities is how she advocates for students in her role. She supports them, helps out with students who have challenging behaviors, relates to the students, and is always dependable. If there's a situation that needs problem solving, tweaking procedures for lunch or for recess, Julie's involved in those decisions so that we can get the view of an employee in the role as well as the viewpoint of a parent. She balances the role of an employee and parent with professionalism and passion. Julie is a West Team member that genuinely enjoys her job and exudes Westlake pride. And finally, one of her colleagues says that we are truly lucky to have Julie as part of the West Team. Julie is genuinely compassionate and dedicated professional, and I'm grateful she is a colleague of mine. Way to go, Julie. This award is so well deserved. Congratulations.
Anything from the, the board of that while I come up to take a picture with her plaque?
Oh, congratulations. That's wonderful what your colleagues are saying about you.
Thank you. I was a little nervous because a few of them said that said some really interesting stuff. Glad they were just messing with me at school today.
So Julie, I want to give you this on uh, behalf of the Westlake Schools and the Board of Education. It's a plaque here and we can stand in front of the podium with Mr. Plantner, if you're in the middle, and we'll take a picture. And one of her family over there. Now your son's here and one is at Westlake Elementary.
Yeah, he's fourth grade year.
Okay, and uh, the other one is in, what are their names?
It's Christian Ben, Ben's in elementary and then Christian is sixth grade at D I S.
Nice. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for, yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, at this point, while I make my way back to the seat, uh, Mr. Woods.
And while they're coming up, Mr. Plantner, we have all these wonderful signs made by Wes students, right? Would you please give our thanks to the teachers and the kids that made them because it really is nice to get some positive things.
You ready?
Right, go for it. No, no, count on it.
I think Julie, I think you should move up to the high school. Yeah, we'll take her. Yeah. Um, so I have the, the pleasure of talking about Kate. I've been waiting for this all week long. Uh, Kate is sweating. She, she was down in my office probably ten times today. What are you gonna say? Uh, I know it's roast, so.
It reminds me to speak after.
She did. She did. Um, in all seriousness, uh, Kate, I'm gonna talk about Kate and share some things that, that some of her colleagues that are here tonight said. Uh, but Kate teaches a social development class where she teaches some of our most challenging students how to communicate. And all of you, those of you that are older in this room, not the kids maybe, have learned that it is all about communication in life. That's where all of our issues come from. And Kate frequently tells me that I belong in her class. We'll revisit that when I'm done here. Uh, so just a couple of things that Kate's colleagues have said about her. Kate provides her students with a safe space throughout their days. Her calm demeanor helps staff and students to deescalate in challenging situations. She meets her students where they are at and she supports them and their varying needs. She and I have worked closely this year while aiming to support a few of her students, and she always comes up with creative solutions and approaches. She has such a kind heart. Kate has truly gone out of her way to make me feel that we are teammates when we are approaching challenging situations. Kate works with students who have social, emotional, and behavioral needs. These students have difficulty following rules, complying with directives, or regulating their emotions in the classroom setting. Sometimes you say that about me. Kate helps build the skills needed to improve these behaviors. She uses research-based interventions to build or strengthen the skills needed to improve these behaviors. She is patient, consistent, and fair. She holds students accountable while still supporting their needs. Her students know she will help them academically with their coursework and in a time of crisis. These students are equipped with skills that translate across the various environments within the school building, which allows business to run smoothly, and when things do not go as plans, she pivots quickly. Kate just has the patience of a saint, and she is always willing to help others. Kate is a consummate professional. She is kind and patient with students, staff, and parents at all times. She is articulate and her communication skills are enviable. She is a model and example to her peers, especially to me. I can't say enough about Kate, uh, and, and I don't know if her kids maybe could say it better. I don't know what you're like at home. Kate has the innate ability uh, to, uh, to, I don't, make you feel calm, bring you down. She talks, she, I've never seen her get heated. Again, kids, I'd look at them. Uh, we'll come home and watch. Yeah. Uh, Kate truly, uh, I don't, has found her niche. I don't know if you feel the same, but you are awesome at what you do, and you know, I've told you that before. So uh, it is my pleasure uh, to, to present this award to Kate and congratulate her. She definitely deserves it.
Did you want to take a moment? Cause you, you had said you're speaking second, so.
You're truly welcome. No, thank you very much.
I didn't know if I should come up with the plaque yet.
I just want to say that if the board ever needs an intervention here, I'm gonna call you.
Front here. That's for you. Congratulations. Congratulations. Now, if I could have, I know, folks, after, um, the next part of the agenda is uh, my presentation. Um, mine is going to be short. If, if those of you who are here for uh, either Kate or Julie can just stay for the beginning part of my presentation and then you can go off and running, uh, is fine with us. Um, so I'll turn it back over to Mrs. Lozinski to hopefully call on me for my presentation.
And you're next on the agenda.
Awesome. So it's such a surprise. Okay, so um, I only have a little bit here. As we close the first month of two thousand twenty-four, we take some time to recognize those who make our school district so special. This evening, evening, we recognize Julie Sepsi as our recipient for the Excellence in Classified Service Award and Kate O'Leary as our recipient of the Exalot Excellence in Certified Service Award. Uh, you heard from those who work closely with them how special these two individuals are. This is not the only celebration tonight. We also take time to thank our Board of Education for their service to our community. Our current president, Mrs. Barbara Lozinski, was uh, appointed to her position back in two thousand twelve. Mr. John Fanukin, I believe in two thousand fourteen, and if I get my dates wrong, let me know. Uh, Mr. Joe Kraft in two thousand sixteen, Mrs. Liz Pernot in two thousand twenty, and our most recent addition is Mr. Brad Lamb, who was just sworn in this month. It's important to point out that even though Mr. Lamb is new to our BOE, he served previous as uh, the BOE, a BOE member in Fairview Park and also serving as the president, I believe. It's not easy being a member of a Board of Education. I think most of you will turn on the news or watch some board meetings and be able to see that it is a very thankless job many ti- in many ways. A strong and stable Board of Education is an asset not only to a school district, but to an entire community. We have a balance of viewpoints, professional backgrounds, as well as service and BOE tenures. This Board of Education has achieved so much over the years and continues to have an eye on the future. So on behalf of our schools and our community, would you join me in also congratulating our Board of Education? I don't want to be on the spot. Are you here for the mayor? We heard a speaker or just visiting?
I'm not speechless. But um, no, first of all, congratulations and uh, a lesson to the gentlemen here. Don't come late to meetings. No, I, I came fadly because I saw Brad posted on Facebook and I thought I had a mind. Definitely it's been a number of years. But while you asked me real quick, well, we thank the school board, so.
Do you want to stand up here? Cause then you'll be on camera. Sure. That's how we put him on the spot.
Yeah.
But he's a pro.
So um, Superintendent Goggins, a lot of you don't know this, about a year and a half ago, I approached him about a project to help promote the history of Westlake and was kind of a far-flung idea. And the school really, the high school really took it to heart and um, created six videos regarding the history of our city. And uh, it was done in conjunction at the time with the, with this, with the broadcast program at the school. We have played five of the six videos at our council meeting. We had the last one to be played, and they're available at the city website. If you haven't seen them yet, please do so. It talks about the history of the city. It talks about how the demon got its name, which is, which I understand is used sometimes to explain just that point. Um, we also have um, an astronaut that's recognized. We talked about um, Jack Minor. Uh, there are Lily Weston House and the Clegg Museum are all highlighted in these six videos. So I hope, and I'm not putting the school board on, 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 on some pressure here, but that we continue to go forward with more programming. So it educates our students on the programs, the history of our city and also the general Westlake residents, because we have a great ci- city with steeped in history, and this is a great way to promote it. So um, take a look if you haven't seen them yet. They're on the city's website. I don't know if you guys have promoted them or not, but I don't think we posted them. But I want to thank you and the school board for its work and support of programs like that. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, for those of you who are here for the celebration, the celebration is over and we are now going to get to work. So thank you all for coming and congratulations to everyone this evening. Enjoy. Oh. Should we do? Can I? You can, um, yeah, I just, if you want, just pause for a second. I want to take a photo of Julie and, hey Amanda. A good time?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
So I'll pick up on my report. We did take a slight pause um, to dismiss the award recipients this evening and let them congregate for a moment and uh, congratulate each other. So that was nice. Um, I do have a couple other items that I want to mention. One is just recognition. Dave Coastfire is, is here this evening, and he does a wonderful job for the district. And one of the things that, that I want to point out, I don't know if you saw that he put in his uh, board report was the grant that he applied for.
Oh, yeah.
And um, excuse me, he applied. Yep, he applied for safety grants. And uh, what we'll be doing is purchasing eight new floor cleaners, four riders and four walk-behinds. And uh, these cleaners, the, the thing with them is they produce um, a less, it's, it's not as slippery when you go to do the waxing and that sort of thing, which is um, gonna make it a better way to reduce work-related injuries. Not that we have a lot of those happening, but it is something that he was able to do. The total cost of those four units are a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, and this grant is covering eighty thousand dollars of it. So it's a um, significant grant. And you know, I just appreciate the extra effort in doing that, Mr. Coastfire. Thank you. So the other thing I want to talk about is an agenda item that's on uh, for approval this evening. And that's Parent Square. And Parent Square is, let me just explain the process here. So this started with um, uh, a Communication Forum topic, and to give you a history of Communication Forum is we meet monthly with our teachers in this room where we put a topic on the table and we talk about it as group administrative, administration teachers, different grade levels to get perspectives on how any decision would impact um, across the district. And in this particular case, the goal was, um, the topic was safe and efficient communication with parents and students. And the primary goal was to have a platform that would eliminate staff texting students directly or through social media. You can have direct messages or direct text. And it would be, you have some situations and a lot of times it's in clubs, activities, or sports where um, uh, an adult would text a student directly. So for example, your boys play baseball. My guess is there was a text thread that would say baseball practices, canceled the buses late, you know, do this and do that. And a lot of times you'll see that. We don't want that. You know, we want um, conversations to be within a platform. And uh, that can be monitored so that we're able to see what conversations are happening. And so as we had that conversation, we sat in here and then we decided it started unfolding to where uh, across the district, we had in the elementary schools um, a program called Seesaw Class Dojo. Um, we saw people using Remind. Uh, um, our um, E L L teachers were using Talking Points. Um, so we saw a lot of these platforms being used um, all over the place. And so we created a subcommittee that met. And it was funny, I walked in and I disclosed that um, my favorite was Power School. You know, we already have it. You know, one of the biggest uh, complaints we usually hear is that, you know, uh, it's another thing and you know, teachers are already logging into Power School. We're like, it would be something that would uh, already be open and we can communicate easier. I thought we were gonna do Seesaw in the elementary and Power School in um, uh, the upper grade levels. And there were some teachers in there who already used Talking Points and really liked it, and then some that used Seesaw and, and really liked it. And what was really cool, we uh, uh, Dr. Zagre um, put together um, uh, numerous vendors to give us presentations. And uh, everybody was open. Like even though people had their, their horse in the race where they kind of wanted to see this or see that, everybody kind of had that open mind and we had those conversations about what would be good. And the very last group to come through, we thought our decision was made. We're like, we're definitely gonna go with this other company. You know, we shouldn't even look at this last company, which was Parent Square, and they blew us away. And so we ended up uh, um, in the subcommittee reaching a consensus that Parent Square would have been the way to move forward to not only um, uh, deal with the, the direct communications, but we also believed that it would change how we communicate with our families. So we brought it back to Communication Forum, and then we had Parent Square present. We had the conversations um, with all of the staff and many of the staff members are parents and some are parents right here in Westlake. And one of the things from a parent perspective is if your kid plays sports or if you're the, the consumer, where you have some teachers using Remind, some using Seesaw, some using Talking Points. Now you as a parent are downloading five apps, you know, and then throw in travel leads, right? You know, you throw in a travel lead or something like that. Now you have like your little app bundle on your phone, uh, grouped together where you're using all these different apps. Now, what then the presentation went and even the Communication Forum sat around and said, yes, this is the way to go. And, and so really, um, everybody shifted over. And so we do have um, on the agenda tonight, hoping that the board does approve the contract with Parent Square um, for this. And so it was um, uh, really, really cool to go through and I can, I can show it to you, but I also have Rob Woods here who um, Rob is uh, very strong with technology. He was one of the people who the company uh, let us uh, kind of play in the sandbox is what they called it, and I'll bring it up on the screen. Rob, I don't know if you want to jump up at the podium. And then you can either guide me or help me. Um, talk about this a little bit, and I'll, I'll show you a little bit of what we have here. Um, hold on, let me, uh, am I okay to share my screen toss? Okay, good. Um, so here are some things that were uh, appealing to us. So this is the Parent Square website. And um, very basic website, but here's what's kind of neat. You see the sign-in area over here. Um, we are a Google School, so we use the Google platform. Teachers use Google Classroom. We have Gmail. And so to sign in. And so to sign in, where it says, sign in with Google. Now, teachers also will have an app inside Power School when they log into Power School. There's something they don't have to leave the platform. Once they're logged in, they can log in. But watch what happens when I just click sign in with Google, since I'm already signed in to my Google account. It opens up. And so it opens right up in the screen. I'm not a Facebook person. But I think this kind of resembles what Facebook looks like. And so over here to the, to the right, where it says, in the top right, it says. My little box is in front of that. My school classes and groups. So the, the key part of this is that this program is not run off an algorithm. Like if you search for something or do something, it doesn't like change your page. What it does is it is catered to you. So whatever classes your student has, whatever building your student or students are in. Or if you wanna get like, click on baseball, click on softball, click on Key Club, click on, you know, any type of thing like that. You get to create your feed. And, and it's just like you would see like in Facebook or something like that. Calendar of events is also on the right. It syncs with the Google Calendar. So, you know, I have Mrs. Williams here, who's on the Earth team in, in seventh grade. And so if the Earth team has a Parent Square page, then their Google Calendar can go right into the events. You know, parents can see it. It's a one-point place to, to work through that. To the left are messages. So I can click on this. And so this is Mr. Woods. I, I put a, say, testing out the group feature. Rob said, hey, guys. And Paul gave a thumbs up. All right. So it's something where if we wanna create a new message, I can jump in a new message. And I can send it. And Mrs. Musselman's here. I'm just gonna send it to Mrs. Musselman and I click on here. But if I add another person like Mr. Woods, see, here it is. You see what just showed up? It says either private message or group message. And so a private message, what it'll do is if I save it as a private and I keep it as a private message. Then the same message is like a BCC. So like the message will go to Rob and then the message will go to Amanda. But and if they reply, they're replying to me directly. So they won't be able to see each other's comments. But let's just say you're a third grade teacher and you have three parents who are gonna help with the Valentine's party coming up in February. You can click on group message. And then when you do that, like you're trying to coordinate something. And then, then you can send it out and with those few people, they'll see each other's messages, but it's controlled by the educator. So by the teacher or by the coach, we're able to do that. So obviously in the mass messages, you'll wanna keep it private because if you're sending it out to two hundred people. And you don't wanna have all these replies coming in, you wanna keep that private. But it's the fact that you have that control. So here, a coach can set up a group to say, you know, baseball players, softball players. And then they click on that. And they send a message out and it can go to him via email, via text, or on the app. You know, and a banner can come down in the app, which each person, when you look at it. Let's see if I can get into my settings here. Where I go into my settings. What you can do is you can control how you're notified. So me as a consumer of the information, I can say that I wanna, I don't wanna get anything, so I could turn it off. I want it instantly. So as soon as something comes in, I get it, whether it's via email, text, or on the app. Or there's the digest section. And then that selection means I'll get the message when I open the app. So you're not gonna alert me to it, but when I open the app, it'll be there and I can see it. Because some people would be like, listen, I don't want twenty messages coming in. While I'm sitting at my office and doing this. I'll open the app and check it out when I have a moment. So people have their choice in how to consume that material as well. I'll pause for a second. And Rob, anything you want to, talk, talk a little bit about how this impacts you?
I just, I mean, it's a game changer. The user experience, the end user experience, I think is phenomenal. It, it causes you, you know, right now, we're in the world of static newsletters, right? It's just one time. I can't edit it. I send it out. If you miss it, cause it went to your spam, you'll never see it maybe. Some of our consumers, it might even get to their inbox because they see it as spam and block it. So from a webmaster perspective, I can offer that you will never get blocked, cause you sign up for the app. And you see it in the live feed. I think the other thing is, is our users are used to this live feed experience. So you know, instead of the, the old mindset of a principal sending out, you know, about winter formal and parent-teacher. You know, I'm saving it all. It's coming out Wednesday. Instead, I can just put it in real time, you know, when it comes out. And you can always see it and scroll down that feed. You can post it to the top. You can pin it up there. People can reply to your messages. You can do signups, which you might be showing them in RSVPing. There, the, the amount of capability that I think Parent Square has is phenomenal.
Each of your students will have a connection to you, correct?
Yeah.
Do they have to sign up for you?
They had, they would have to sign up for the app. And I don't know necessarily that they would need to sign up to receive the notifications. Cause they would be loaded in there.
If they're gonna sign up for the app and if they want text messages, they're gonna have to find Parent Square with their phone.
Got it. So student signs up, student gets an app. It's on their phone. It's on desktop, laptop. I have a new Spanish teacher in my sophomore year. I will have to, I don't know, somehow connect with her to receive her message.
Automatic.
That would be loaded in based on your schedule.
So schedules sets it up automatically.
Yeah, it's the co-curricular, extracurricular where they may need to sign up for a project. But if they're scheduled with, with the new Spanish teacher.
It's part of curriculum, so they're automatic.
The, that class roster in her group and she'll, she'll be able to communicate.
Nice. And I'm just thinking about it from a logistics point of view for that teacher next year. Will she still be connected to all those students? Does it even matter? Will she have new students?
She would go away, I would think, Pete, right? It would be based on her.
You kinda wipe and start the year over kinda thing?
Data rollover and in summer.
Okay.
We would want that to be archived.
So that we. Got it. That was another.
To look at in case there's a need to do that.
So that is archived, filed for forever, right? Those communications.
Not quite forever. I think they told us five years.
To match the seven years.
Seven.
Next. Okay.
So will the parents, the parents won't be getting the same messages as the kids then? They'll have their own?
They would essentially get the same, like in my building, yeah.
So are you gonna have a?
And they do that now. So like when I send a newsletter to parents, I send it to all parents. I email all students and then I post to the website.
Okay. So are you going to have like a, a learning session or, or? Is this just something that's gonna come naturally?
Sounds like it's pretty intuitive, no?
I'll tell you what, I think that app is very intuitive based on your point, the Facebook point. It, it, it's very similar looking to I think what a lot of our end users are currently doing with other apps. But I, you know, obviously I told, you said you were talking about it tonight, cause I called him today and asked when I can start using it. You know, I think the more we use it, get, get, get them involved, you know, they'll be able to use it well. And listen, you don't have to use all the extra functionality as a parent. Really, the feed is your, is your go-to. And so if you can, you know, do this with your thumb, you're good to go in terms of that. But, but getting them in and getting it registered. And, and we live the texting experience. Honestly, it's better in the app. I, I think they have a great app. So, you know, I think some people have concerns about sharing phone numbers and whatever. You don't need to. I, I think the app experience is phenomenal even compared to me getting a text. I turned my texts off. I don't know if you guys did too.
Gaggle connection and need for it or not?
I don't gaggle.
So if, if teachers, all student emails are, are being looked at through the gaggle. So if, if you're, if they're communicating via email, that will still be looked at.
With this?
But if it's text messages or something, or just the feed.
No.
No.
Okay.
Right, or like messages in there, it would not.
Correct.
Yeah.
So it's just gonna eliminate the others like Seesaw and all those other things you were talking about. That's all gonna be gone.
So that would be more, so continue what they're using this year. Start introducing this platform. Officially next year would be like Seesaw. Whatnot would be gone. It would just be this platform?
Yeah. So what's cool about this company is we have on, on the agenda a one-year agreement. But they're gonna start us six months early. So they're gonna, when we sign this and do it, we're, we know however long it takes to fully. Integrate into our system, we're gonna turn it on. We're gonna let our administrators use it and, and begin working with some people who wanna test it.
Sure.
And then that helps us. You never wanna do that. And Pete did a good job with it. When we were transitioning to Gmail, he did it at the end of the year, which caused some heartburn. But you'd much rather have that while people are here and they can test it and they can use it. As opposed to coming back in August and you're setting up your classroom and you're getting new kids and all that sort of thing. And you, you then start doing Gmail. So we're gonna begin to roll it out and open it. And then have it kinda, you know, spread throughout the district. And, and do this. Now, I could show you how to do a post. This is kinda neat too. And I'll show you, there's a couple of features, which I'm not doing it justice. Because I'm not a salesman forum. But if you just click on a new post and you can watch me make one, what's kinda neat. And I'll, I'll show you a couple of features, is this is just gonna be a superintendent newsletter.
You're gonna tell us who your audience is?
Yeah. And then so what you can do is I'm, I'm gonna do the Westlake review team. And then, cause I don't have anybody else, there's nobody else in it.
For example, will you, will you communicate with staff this way as well?
Well, you can, we can, are around the schools. It will replace our around the schools. It will replace our key communicator. This has a community thing too, where community members can sign up. And then, and we can also open it up to our support organizations, our educational foundation, our music boosters, our athletic boosters. So then we're all kinda communicating on one platform. And, and you can choose here who should see this. Staff or parents, you know, and, and you can choose that. But here's what's kinda neat. So I can drop different things in.
With the snow days too?
Snow days as well. Yeah. So it really will, it'll push out to all those type of things, even ice days or wind chill days, whatever days you wanna call them. So, but here's what's kinda neat, and I'll show the, this to you really quick, is you can build a newsletter. So you look at this and say, well, I'm, I'm gonna send a newsletter out and you can create a template. And you can save the template, so you don't have to do this over and over again. But here's a basic newsletter. That has the gibberish that you usually would see in there as placeholders. But I can go in and just, so I can go in here and say, I don't want, obviously don't want that there. I'm gonna replace that with my header. So I'm just gonna drop that in there. So now my header's in there and I wanna keep the topics. And I do wanna do these pictures. But I wanna replace this picture with this particular one from Unified Sports. And in this one, I'm gonna wanna do a story about the football game from Friday, let's just say. But the whole point behind it is when you look at, you know, the ease of being able to just build a newsletter. So now I put in the content and we're off and running. You could do things, you can get in to where you jump in here and you can, you know, change the, get, you know, you don't want the blue. You want green in there. I even went in and found the exact code of our green.
Oh.
So we can actually go into the color and you see the hex here to where that is not Westlake green. Just so you know, Westlake green, which I wrote down here, is actually two, three, four. F three, three. So then you click okay. And now it's Westlake green. So it's really that simple. I'll show you something that Rob mentioned a moment ago. Is you can go in and add signups. So you can, you see over here where it says ask for items. So we can say in here, we need, you know, people to donate tissues. Boxes. Or whatever type of thing it is. And they used socks in here, but if you're doing a socks drive. So you know, you donate socks. We need a total of. Fifty. And, and that's it. And then so we, we do that. Oh, when do I need them by? I didn't put the date in. I need them by January thirty first. Okay. So then that is the, the list. So I think that's it. So then, oh, and then I gotta post it. And then what I could do is I can request volunteers to where, you know, on February fourteenth. We need the, this is that Valentine's Day. And whatever type of thing, we need five volunteers. And, you know, nine AM, nine AM. And then post it. I hope. Let's see, post now. Post now. And then when you go to the home. You have the newsletter up. And you have the.
Got it. Right.
What's that?
We're.
Oh, you just got a message?
Yeah.
Yeah. So you go in here and then you can look at it. And then you see at the end, it's like, oh, look, I need socks. You know, and then you could do a sign up. I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring in five pairs saved. So I'm bringing in five. You know, I'm gonna sign up. Two spots. And then so now you know, oh, Rob just signed up too.
Yeah.
So Rob just signed up for the volunteer. So you see what I mean? I mean, it's something that it, for conferences. Teachers don't have to go to, what do you, what do you use for conferences?
PTC fast.
PTC back?
Go to this?
It'll be this. So this'll take care of your conferences, your class parties, your, all of those type of things like that.
As a parent who gets the building process emails, now I do love the content. I will tell you, the user experience of you get the email saying you have an email to read and you have to click the link and then go. And I will tell you, the way it shows up on your smartphone is terrible. And it, it's kind of an exercise of like flipping your phone around. And yeah. And this is not a dig on you, Mr. Woods or anyone.
I know, that's current, yeah.
It, it's just, it's the technology.
Correct.
And this is one of those pain points that I've heard from almost every parent multiple times. This gets rid of that pain point. And I think that would be something most people would enjoy. And I always have to laugh at the beginning of the school year. You know, you always see those various reels and memes going around and all the different, nowadays, they all kind of rag on all the different apps. That families have to download for all the different communication devices. The fact that it's pretty much gonna be this. And then I'm guessing Power School for your.
The grades.
Your grade. The fact that it's very much narrowing it down, I think that really helps. So it's no longer, you need to have, I think Whiz Bang is my favorite one that people call. Is it just makeup names?
Well, so then the other thing that's really cool is that it translates messages as well. That was a big for our ELL. There was a company that does a phenomenal job in translation. This does a good job. So it's, and so what this does is what it'll do, and what's kinda interesting is when you actually. When I actually go in and I'll, I'll edit this post. And what I didn't point out is one of the things that I could do. Is I could, it's right here, it says edit translation. So I could create five different versions of this post. And let me, let me say it this way. So if I type the content, so if I type it or, and then it'll automatically translate. To whatever, whatever the family has designated in Power School. So if the parent had, when they register, say, this is the language we speak at home. Then if we create text, then it will translate that to, to whatever. So then they'll see it in a different language. Now, what that doesn't work with is images. So if I create a flyer for something and it's, and the picture is in English and it has typed in English. It can't translate within a picture. But what you could do, let's say you're adventurous. Or you're resourceful enough to where it's like, I'm gonna make five of those pictures and I'm gonna translate it myself. You can assign the picture. Like if you're on your Earth team and you know there's four different languages spoken, you're like, you know what? We're all gonna pick a language. We're gonna make it friendly to, to all of our families. Friendly to to all of our families and you put that image in, um you can assign it to the language. So you could say, we're gonna send this one in Spanish, we're gonna send this one in Ukraine, we're gonna send this one in Arabic. And then so then they'll receive it completely with image and all inside their language. So like I said, I mean, there's, Rob, am I missing anything?
No, I, you know, it's funny watching your, I I truly think it transforms the way you communicate because newsletters are a thing of the past. And and so I, you know, in mine, it will be like live and going. And and truly, I think that's what our end user, it'll be a much better experience instead of having to pinch and zoom and. Kinda go in there, it's a phenomenal, phenomenal product.
My question for you, so would you still, I I know we still have to maintain our district website.
Who's you?
Mr. Woods.
Okay.
Um, so. Would any of the things on the district website, particularly thinking the calendar, would any of that? Crossover or would that, they're still gonna be separate and then you're gonna have to just keep that enough?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't cross yet, but it's funny, they also offer a web hosting. A platform with it that we'd like to take a look at, you know, and see how it goes. Cuz ideally that would be your one, I mean, true one stop shopping. Um, so it'd be interesting to see, I would assume their web hosting platform would integrate well with the app, otherwise why have it? But they kind of advised us to start here, you know, and then if if you love it, which we know you will, they told us, and I really think we will. Then we'll take a look at that, that web solution, that'd be really nice if it could integrate all in one.
In each post, what you can do is after you make that post, if you have, like if Rob has his Twitter. Connected to um this program, he just clicks and it'll post right on Twitter too.
Yeah, up we goes, I mean, the app is so great that. I posted and did, remember I did a signup or something, driving in my car to the winter luncheon or whatever. I mean, that's how good the app is, I was able to do that, shouldn't have been doing it maybe, but uh.
Pricing seems fair.
It does, with the platforms we're dropping, it'll cost a little bit more, uh but not incredibly significant.
What about possibility of hackers hacking into it?
We did talk about some of that security, but it's as secure as it can be, you know, nothing is. You know, completely oblivious.
Look at it as a productivity issue, it seems like it would increase productivity from a staff point of view, student point of view, family point of view.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
We're hoping that it takes community, it it takes what we're doing from communication to engagement.
Right.
You know, that's one of our goals is that, right now, we're speaking at people with newsletters. I didn't show on there, you know, you can allow comments. Or you can shut them off. And then you you can do it where there's no comments, but you can appreciate it, which is kind of like a like, you know, and and do things like that.
That's truly my biggest question with it from a principal's perspective is how it will change communication, what will that look like for me? And I would assume a teacher might have that kinda same idea, like how 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 big does do I open the hole, you know, how I. Um, so that that's truly what I'm curious about, cuz right now I. I feel like I put myself out there to be fairly easy to communicate with, um and so, you know, students and parents and. Email and, you know, parents will call me or whatever, so I'm curious to see like what this does.
Sure.
In terms of it.
So we think it went far and beyond our basic needs, like our basic needs of secure, safe, efficient communication. Um, in in those regards, but then it kinda opened it and we're like, whoa. This really, that's why we switched, when we went through the. The four other companies, we're like, oh, yeah, this can do this, but then we saw this, we're like, whoa, this kind of actually changes.
Where are these folks physically?
Where where are they?
Um.
Based out of?
Do you know where they're based out of?
It's US.
I know California was the the star. Anyway.
So are you able able to start it with, was he let you begin yet?
He said you guys have to vote on it or something.
I say go ahead. Got my vote.
Right, oh, he keeps going, he'll call and he's like, do we have it yet? Do we have it yet? Come on, let's go, what are you waiting for?
I thought it'd be interesting, especially showing this with the support organizations and especially knowing.
Yeah.
PTA pays.
Yeah.
Their newsletter.
And just to have it like on one, like I can just switch to PTA or switch to WDA or.
I mean fundamentally, that would save all of them funds. And they wouldn't have to be paid for that for constant contact.
Yeah.
What negatives came up in conversation?
Um, you know, in looking at between, I mentioned there was one company. That was incredible at translation to where they actually. They they went outside of AI and actually as human, if you if you leave something, if you give them up lead time. They actually have humans who will do the translation, which is more accurate, and they'll also translate attachments. Um, and so, but other than that, I don't know, Pete, was there any other?
There weren't any big negatives.
But it it's even cool where like teachers can set office hours, because our biggest concern was that we didn't wanna create this perception out there. That now our teachers are twenty-four seven employees. Where it's like, you know, ten o'clock at night, oh, I wanna send a quick message and they expect an immediate response, so they can set it to office hours. And say, your message has been delivered, however, you know, office hours are between this time and this time.
This is closed.
Yeah, and and we can get, and that's when I think gaggle comes in. You know, because, you know, one of the things that we wanna make sure is that if there are urgent messages that they are being scanned and if it does go to Gmail. Then those will be scanned, so that's, at least that's my understanding.
I think the other thing that came up was, so many other apps have different features that are kinda unique to them, like ClassDojo has a.
Oh, yeah.
Um, classroom management, kind of behavior incentives, stuff built into little monsters.
Yeah.
And kids get um incentives that way. Um. Just doesn't have that, um and it's a little different than Seesaw and it doesn't have a built in library of. Lesson topics and that kind of stuff.
Okay.
But the teachers that were part of the evaluation process. All agreed that this was. Well worth it, this was a game changer for us, and that they could find other ways to do those other things, so it was not a big deal.
Thank you, and it won't be mandatory, you know, we're gonna have, I I think in in your high school, you're gonna have people who use Google Classroom and email effectively to where.
Okay.
They probably won't be logging on in that way.
But this is gonna be mandatory in the sense that. Step on, if you are texting, this is how you can communicate with.
Yep.
Either email or this.
Yep.
Okay.
So anyway, I thought you guys.
Absolutely.
Thanks for.
Just for you guys to see.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Woods.
Time to go to basketball, is that all right?
Yes, absolutely.
Good luck.
You have the peoples, you have the privilege to go to basketball.
Pass.
Privilege.
Okay. So is that it for you?
It's it for me.
Okay, uh, Mr. Hopkins, we're gonna go to President's seat part.
I appreciate that, thank you, Madam President. Um. Tonight, Ray, I just wanna focus my report on um our audit from fiscal year uh twenty-three. Uh, again, a reminder, our school district operates on a fiscal year July first uh till June thirtieth. So uh as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, we ended fiscal year twenty-three. Our audit process is really about a six month process and it is uh conducted by the State of Ohio Auditor's Office. Uh, we did have uh finish up the audit and had a post audit meeting in which uh a couple of our board members were able to join in. Uh, it is a meeting that is hosted by the Auditor State's Office and that was held. I think it was the twenty-seventh of December this year, twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth, one one of the others, but uh very close to the end of the year, and we were able to file the audit. And get that taken care of, um. We were notified on January eighth that our audit was being released on January ninth, so our audit is available. Uh, out on the State of Ohio Auditor's uh Auditor State's website. Uh, I am very uh pleased to present the audit to the Board of Education as a unmodified opinion audit. Which is generally referred to as a clean audit, it's what we're going for, and so um I'm very uh. Proud of the fact that we have a another audit, unmodified audit. Uh, I do believe this audit will again qualify for the Auditor State's award, but we'll find that out over the next several weeks. I don't have confirmation of that right now, um. We are a district that operates on roughly fifty-five million dollars general fund. Uh, we have around seventy million dollars going through the district in all funds. Um. Payroll and benefits of that fifty-five million equate to about forty-five million dollars of it. Um, I, uh, the district is extremely fortunate and I'm personally very blessed to have a phenomenal staff who work in my office. Who really are the reflection of this audit. And uh oftentimes, um, you know, well, they don't come to these meetings, you don't see them sitting here. My name's on the audit, but it reflects the work of really the five uh women in my office, and I just wanna briefly uh uh bring up their names here. Uh, the five women I have in my office is my budgetary assistant, Roberta Rents, she kinda oversees. All functions of our our general fund, we have Evelyn Urban who does our grants management. Uh, again, any of our grant funds uh she oversees, we have uh Mary Studer who uh handles most all of our accounts payable. Cuts millions of dollars of checks throughout the year, uh and handles all of the invoices and getting all that taken care of. Um, I have my uh administrative assistant, Robin Allen, who also helps out with AP and our purchase orders. And then I also have a payroll manager, Robin Murray, who oversees the payroll uh payroll. For roughly six hundred employees that we have in the district. Uh, so I have five wonderful people in my office and uh I wish their names would go on the audit instead of uh mine. It's really reflective of their work and I would uh, if the board has an opportunity to reach out to any of them and just acknowledge their work, I encourage you to do so cuz. They do a phenomenal job, additionally, I'm uh fortunate because of our administrative team, our superintendent. And our administrative uh staff in our buildings, uh and assistants in the buildings who really help uh maintain the uh uh. The finances and and the uh integrity of the finances for the district, so I wanna thank the entire district, uh it is a reflection of of. Six hundred plus employees, not just my office, so. Uh, beyond that, that's all I have, so I will hold my uh uh other comments until I get to my recommendations.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, uh we've come to the point in our agenda where we have a hearing of the public. And um our Board of Education meetings are public meetings. This means it is a meeting to publicly conduct our business in front of the public. There are times when the public may address the board during the periods of the meeting designated for public participation. We, the Board of Education, do not engage in a public debate. And especially do not have a public discussion about individual student situations in this setting. Each person addressing the board shall give their name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person is allotted three minutes until the total time allotted is used. During that period, no person shall speak twice until all who desire to speak have had the opportunity to do so. Recognized speakers cannot transfer or delegate their speaking time to others. If a person wants to speak for longer than three minutes, the end of the three minute period, the speaker needs to stop. If additional people wish to speak, they will be given the opportunity to speak. If no one else would like to speak, the original speaker may continue for an additional three minute period. The period of public participation may be extended by a vote of the majority of the board present and voting. Having said all this, is there anybody who wishes to speak? Okay, not seeing anybody, we are going to move forward. And that brings us up to um approval of the minutes. So all of you have had a chance to read uh the minutes of the previous meeting. And are there any additions or corrections?
No.
Okay, if not, all those in favor of approval, please say aye, aye. Any no's? No.
I'll abstain.
Pardon?
I'll abstain that last meeting in December.
Okay, thought you were saying no there from.
I'm just abstaining.
So we have four ayes and one abstention.
Thank you.
Okay, and that brings us up to Mr. Hopkins with your treasures of recommendations.
Thank you, I do have four recommendations in front of the board tonight. Uh, if it's okay, I'll go through all four of them uh very briefly cuz uh I would um. Ask that if it's so pleased to the board to combine the four into one vote. Uh, so the first one I have, Treasures, a recommendation five A is uh execution of change orders to Icon. Um, so this is uh finalizing our demolition projects of the three. Uh, elementary schools that we had torn down Dover Elementary, Basset Elementary and Holly Lane Elementary. Uh, throughout that process, we had uh issued, the board had approved three different uh GMP or a total of four different GMP amendments. Um, the project total cost was roughly one point three million dollars. Uh, throughout these projects, there were some little things that we had to change, add, modify, uh which uh were put into uh change orders. Um, instead of coming to the board each time, we held all of the change orders and finalized the whole project. Because there were also allowances that we were able to get money back from. And so combining the eight change orders uh into one approval for the board tonight, uh this is roughly uh forty-nine thousand dollars and some change. Um, and covers a number of things, including uh extra work that had to be done uh. In accordance with the City Engineers Office for some swales that had to be put in for drainage purposes, some repairs to drain lines that were not uh. Uh, easily reconnected back into some electric work uh that they had to be done, additional electric work to get the parking lot lights. Uh, working over, I think that was a Basset, um it had sidewalk replacement in some areas that the sidewalk. Got torn up from the demolition process, so uh different pieces like that, so it's those eight different change orders, so. Uh, I do have that in front of you uh in Board Docs, if you have questions, please let me know, I'm happy to answer those or ask Mr. Kosovar to answer those as well. Um, second, I have some then and nows, um obviously, the largest one is if the board does approve. Of uh five A, uh I do ask that the board approve the change order of that same amount. Uh, as of then and now, because that work has already happened, this way we can get them paid here relatively soon. I have uh five C transfer funds, this is the transfer funds for the pool lease. Um, as we're fully aware, our lease with the uh city uh was a twenty-five year lease, it expired last year. Uh, last year was our last payment uh for the pool lease, uh this is a continuation of renegotiated agreement. Um, I know people and and I certainly wasn't around twenty-five years ago here in Westlake, uh so I don't know exactly what was said. But in my research, in the actual pool lease agreement. Uh, the lease agreement did not speak to diving wells or anything like that, it spoke to a uh usage. A time and usage uh of the facility. It guaranteed X number of practices during certain months, guaranteed X number of competition during uh certain months. Uh, uh effectively giving us exclusive use of the pool diving well competition area uh during selected times. Um, and for that, we paid a annual fee of ten thousand dollars, uh Dr. Goggan had worked with um our. City Rec Department uh to renegotiate that, uh it is still at the same ten thousand dollar fee. Uh, this is very much in line with both what other cities do with, or other schools do with their city pools. And what our city pool does with other schools, we're not the only uh swim program that uses uh the rec center for a swim uh a swim team.
Did it came one?
Uh, I don't know exactly what it is, but it's it's very, very much in line, I'll put it that way. And so, um, I am recommending, uh, you know, the uh uh the transfer of the funds that we can pay that in words. Um, and then D, I have a new uh club, I believe it's a high school for future health professionals club. Uh, so it's a purpose statement for that club. Uh, as I said before, if it's so pleased to the board, I'm happy to combine uh five A through five D into one vote.
Okay, is there a motion to approve Treasures' recommendations five A through five D?
So move.
Second.
Any uh questions or discussion?
I'll mention, uh, being a part of the uh uh separate but related, being a part of the audit uh meeting, um it is uh wonderful to hear from the state. Um, about you and your staff and all the great work that you do, we believe that, it's great to hear that from the state as well and. Uh, we too commend your phenomenal staff and thanks for all that you do. Um, specific to the pool, I have never heard anything negative from coaches, from students. Um, that we are ever uh kept out of being able to have competitions, practices, what have you. At the uh, at the pool, anything we should be aware of?
No, uh uh again, the pool has been a a great partner to work with. Um, I know there was some uh uh questions that I had heard from uh different people about, you know, with the. Initial lease ending, would we have to pay going forward, any uh uh going forward? Uh, again, this is one of those, first and foremost, I'll tell you, and I think uh Mr. Kosovar would be happy to stand up and and agree with this, um. You don't wanna run your own auditorium.
Your own pool.
Your own, your own, yeah, to run your own pool is.
Yeah.
You know, uh uh it it the the cost of doing so is uh astronomical. So for this, um, you know, at the ten thousand dollar fee to allow us to use the pool. Uh, it's been a phenomenal relationship with the city and has been very good for our athletes and 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 sports programs, so we're very much in favor.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? No? Okay. I keep pulling this table apart.
Trying to keep asking it, it's okay.
Okay. Um, roll call, please.
Tanukin?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Perna?
Yes.
Motion. Motion carries. Thank you.
Doctor Goggan?
Yes, I'll start off with our gifts and donations. Um. This is five A. Uh, Matia Billick donated a hundred dollars to Westside Connections at Westlake High School. Stanley and Marcia Bullard donated three hundred dollars to Westside Connections at Westlake High School. And Chula Indian Barbecue donated dinner tonight, uh valued at a hundred and sixty seven dollars and eighty eight cents in honor of school board recognition month. And we'll say the chula was delicious. Um, however, that coffee I had was one of those spices who jumped up. And if you like, I I did have the spicy mango and it got me a moment ago, but it was delicious. Um, so thank you for that. And I I'm not gonna cover letters. B through J, those were covered in the directory reports, but if you do have questions, please feel free to ask them. Uh, letter K, we do have an overnight field trip for our hockey team in Springfield, Ohio. And the very last one is letter L, which is an amendment to resolution uh that we. That you approved earlier and you can see in bold, there was only one change um uh to that scale. And it's it's noted in there. So we do have to amend that. Um. I would uh appreciate if uh six A was separate, uh but would be uh wide open to six B versus and six L being combined.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion to approve Superintendent's recommendation six A gifts and donations?
Second.
Uh, any questions or comments? I'd like to thank, of course, our generous uh. People in the city of Westlake that always amazes me that people are so willing to donate. So thank you.
And a special thank you to Leanna Flannery and everyone at Chula for a delicious dinner.
Any others? Okay, roll call, please.
Kraft?
Yes.
Perna?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Lozinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, is there a motion to approve Superintendent's recommendation six B through six L? So move?
Second.
Okay, questions or discussions? I would like to just say that with the overnight field trips, this one in particular is the hockey team. Uh, all costs are paid for by the participants. The board does not uh cover any of the costs. Any other comments, questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Perna?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Lozinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I can't get my. Can't get my agenda. Oh, second hearing of the public. Anybody wish to get and speak? Seeing none? Okay, where am I? Oh, board comments, okay. Somebody please comment so I can get my agenda back here.
I just wanted to follow up with Mister Hopkins. I know uh you and Mister Renalo, Mister Woods, we're gonna be talking about the pay to participate fees and just sort of reevaluate the entire process. But we still on track for that coming up here in another month or so?
We are. Uh, we've been meeting through our uh athletic council.
Okay.
Meetings and having those conversations. I know Mister Renalo has pulled a number of uh. Pulled another, a number of other districts in our conference and in our area to have some uh data to compare.
Okay, and we're also including all the different clubs and activities. Cause I know right now we're only charging at like the high school level, but I know this is something that. Because there are a number of different activities at different levels.
Yeah, we we do have some uh club and activity uh fees at uh Bernison DIS, uh but they're minimal.
Yeah.
Um, right now, our focus has solely been on uh pay to participate within the athletic program, not within clubs.
Okay.
Uh, we can, we can pull other districts to. To add that in there.
That in there also.
Yep.
That's not been just a. Since we instituted pay to participate, um, it really has members news.
True.
So it's really with COVID and then Mr. Renalo joining, really, it's not about. Creating a holy system of all the gaming to be actionable.
Just to clarify, we aren't, we don't charge for every. Club that they have down at like the elementary school or at dist.
Um. I'm not aware of any club fees at the elementary school. Uh, board approved club fees. Uh, you do have some board approved club fees at DIS. Um, and then of course at at LBMS and on the.
The sports.
Well, no, uh, this would be club as well. So you might have a fee for um. Trying to think. Student council, yeah. We charge like a fifteen dollar fee to participate in different clubs and it becomes part of the cap, but we do have club fees, absolutely.
Any other questions or comments?
I would just like to take an opportunity to thank uh Doctor Goggan for uh having me uh. Uh, I was able to tour both the DIS and LBMS uh a couple of weeks ago. So thank you very much. And I'm looking forward to. Getting into the high school and to the elementary school also to take a tour of those. Um, we're very fortunate here in Westlake and thank you very much for uh taking me on the tour.
You're welcome.
Yes, and the next time we plan a curriculum field trip to Wes. I want to see Elena's plant thing that's all set up with the. That was awesome in the report, so I'm looking forward to that.
Yep, since we're on that topic, have we ever. Considered going back to the, taking the board meeting down the road. Uh, went south with COVID. Uh, but we used to go two, three places.
Problems a live stream, which is why we've not brought that back and which is why we started having them present here.
I I thought about that today too, because I remember when we used to go to the different schools, but it it would be a little bit hard carding all this.
It'd be harder than that possible.
Well, this is just convenient and. Just easy.
Yeah. They're all pretty well wired in technology.
We'll think about it. We can put you on that committee to plan that. Would you like to do that?
I'll delegate that.
Happy more than happy birthday.
Okay, uh, any other comments? Uh, board items? I don't really have any board items. Okay, then is there a motion to adjourn?
So move, second.
Roll call, please.
Adjourn at seven eighteen PM. Kraft?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Lozinski?
Yes.
Perna?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Motion carries.